We'd like to welcome everybody to council meeting tonight. Thanks, everybody for joining us here in the council chambers and on TV too. We will, we're excited to have a meeting tonight. We'll get started off with an inspirational message and prayer given by Craig Chittister. And then who's doing the pledge? Shane. Shane's leading. Is he leading the pledge?
Yes, he is.
Craig?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. And I apologize, I'm on blood thinners now, so I've got a bloody nose that doesn't want to stop. But I did want to just come and publicly thank our first responders as my inspirational thought today. A month ago, half hour into the new year, I decided to have a heart attack. And had some chest pains and told my wife, oh, I'll be fine. I just need to lay down. And she said, no, I'm calling 911. And this is why women live longer than men. But our first responders showed up at my house. They were very professional, took great care of me, got me over to the hospital. And I just wanted to publicly thank them for everything that they do, their selfless service to our community. And Mr. Mayor, I wonder if I'm going to impose on you to deliver a letter to them on my behalf?
Of course.
I just wanted to thank them personally.
Thank you, Craig. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Now, will you open your prayer?
Be better.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet together as community members and leaders, grateful for the favorable circumstances in which we meet, for the liberty that we enjoy each day. We pray that thy Spirit will be here in this meeting, that deliberations will be done in a spirit of love and friendship, and that our elected leaders can act on our behalf to maintain our liberties and freedoms. Grateful for our community, the community field that is here, grateful for the love that we share as a community. Pray that thou will continue to guide us. And we ask this prayer in gratitude in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Craig.
Y'all three, rise and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that takes us to item number four, public comments. Is anybody from the public here to speak to the mayor and council? Okay, we'll go to council comments. We'll start on that end. Councilman Euler.
The only thing I have, Mayor, is Chamber of Commerce, Spanish Fork Salem Chamber of Commerce tomorrow night will be having their awards, their annual awards gala, where they'll recognize some of the businesses in our community that have done good this year. Another thing to mention, the chamber is also looking for a new president and CEO. They've asked for people to spread the word and anybody that they think would be good to, to put their names in for that position. So it's a paid position, from my understanding. So they're, they're looking for that. And then they also said, said to keep an eye out for the Chamber Magazine, which will be delivered in the next few months. Also to look on social media, Spanish Fork Chamber, Spanish Fork Salem Chamber on Facebook for things that are going on in the community as far as the chamber is concerned. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Marshall?
My turn. I love this part. I don't have any report. No, so this last week, well, two weeks ago, the legislative session started. We've had a chance to be up on the hill a couple times. The first was, when was it, last Wednesday? Was it before?
Yep.
Two weeks ago. Got to meet up there with our U-City Council and Lieutenant Governor and our representatives and senators, and it was a great time. I would say to those that are listening tonight, make sure if you have, if a bill comes up that you have questions on, please reach out to your, to your representative or senator. They're more than willing to take your call or your text or your email and respond. They are really looking forward to having the dialogue about whatever legislation they have in front of them. So please do. Mayor and I had a chance yesterday to be up on the hill and talk to a few and sort of say our case for keeping local control local. And I think they're pretty responsive to that. So I think, public out there, please reach out when you have a concern. They'd love to hear from you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Beck?
Thank you. To piggyback on that a little bit, yesterday, Mayor was in person and our city manager, Seth Perrins, and I were zoomed in, the Legislative Policy Committee meeting, just listening to Bill up on the hill. And I just echo what you just said, that our representatives do want to hear from us. And I like that they are also updating us on Facebook, social media, QR codes to keep us updated. So reach out if you have questions. Today, all of the Fiesta Day's website went live. And so for those of you who are interested in being a craft vendor, or a food vendor, or if you're ready to get your parade entry in, the website is live and ready for registration. And I think that's all I have.
Comes on us quick.
Yes, it does. Every year.
Jeez.
And every year, as elected officials, we almost always get a call from someone saying, oh, we want to be in the parade. We want to sell our food at the park, right? And so we can't get that message out enough now that, hey, it fills up quickly, get on it, right? So I assume it's my turn.
It's your turn, Councilman Gordon.
Thanks, Mayor. Had a water quality meeting with a lot of people around the state of Utah. And it was interesting, as we approved some more money for Provo City, Payson City. Payson City, we approved a project for their wastewater facility at $27 million earlier in 2021. It's at $54 million, the cost of that project, right? Nobody's surprised. We all understand the market. But Provo, Millville, all of these different projects are experiencing quite some severe project increases. Hopefully, we're able to manage ours as we are quick to be under construction on our own sewer treatment facility, which is looking like it will be over $100 million. And so I always joke that we see something like a new library being built right at Center in Maine, if you will, First South in Maine. And that is the most, like, it's really important to us, right? But the largest project in the city is, is not as glamorous, right? It's sewage. But it's important. And, and so important to talk about, one of the projects that we were assisting Millville on would be them getting a lot of people off of septic in their area. And, and just an interesting point to that is, as our new facility is built, we, we look at our location as being something regional, where we would be able to take some of that off ourselves, people that might be on septics. And, and that's important for our groundwater and the quality of, of our water in the area. So also had a South Utah Valley Solid Waste Meeting. So go from sewage and talk about garbage is also, you know, not, not that glamorous. However, things are going very well there. We have a special meeting next week to discuss our final budget number for our new transfer station that will be built north of the jail. You hear me talk a lot about that. And we are, we are, we've received the final number. We're chewing on it and getting it all dialed in to make sure that we don't surpass what we've approved as a bond. And so the only other thing I wanted to report from that garbage meeting is that we're still hovering around the 30% contamination rate in our recycling. And we, we can do better in our blue cans. If, if you're putting things in your blue can that you shouldn't, then it's, it's pretty close to the same amount of money to get a second black can. They'll pick it up every, they'll pick it up every, every, every week instead of every other. So I'm trying to say that politely, but if, if, you know, you're not, you're not, if you're just using your blue can as a second can, probably better off. You can text the city through our system, say, hey, instead of a recycled can, I'd rather have a second black one, if you will. Or be better about what you're putting in your recycle can.
What was the number, Gordon?
Sorry?
Where, where would I find what I can and can't put in?
Yeah, we have, we have some information on our website about what is, what is, you may have heard me in the past talk about the Amazon effect that's happening. Because in years past, you could not throw a pizza box in your recycling. You're like, wait, it's cardboard. Well, it had so much contamination because of the grease that it's actually, it's actually okay because so much cardboard's coming into the system. We call it the Amazon effect. Everybody's getting so many packages to their houses. But these are, we went from eight down to six items. And these are the six items, right? Most, mostly cardboard paper. You should rinse your aluminum cans, steel cans, milk containers, things like that before you put them in. Most people don't know that. So at the Gordon household, we just try and do cardboard and paper and food boxes because we're not very good at rinsing out our aluminums and things like that. We might save those and take them to the metal salvage yard if we, if we will. So, good question.
There's a million half-drunk cans of root beer around.
Yep, yep. Exactly. Exactly. So, thank you, Councilman Marshall. Good question. We had up there a picture of the new, just a rendering of the new facility. We're going through-
I was going to say Matt was the rendering, but you're talking-
Yeah, this guy on the right. Just kind of walk him out of your mind for a minute. He, he does not want to be in the limelight. But the new facility, we're going through a branding process as well. Same company that rebranded Spanish Fork's logo a number of years ago is helping the district. SUV SWD is a little, a little-
Clunky?
Clunky. As, and then I always just say, the garbage district. And that's the opposite of clunky. And so we got to find a balance of renaming what our district will be. So a lot of good things happening there. Bills and Bagels was successful last Saturday. It kind of piggybacks on what Councilman Marshall said. These representatives that represent us here in our area, they, they really do listen. Like, it's, it's really kind of fun to see that you can text your representative and they will literally respond. Counselor, excuse me, not counsel, Representative White, Steve White, he's been drinking from a fire hose as a new guy. And it's kind of fun to see him still smiling. But, but legitimately, Mayor Mendenhall was texting him on something and he's texting him back. And I think that's, you know, I think that's really, he's thrown his cell phone number out there and they want to hear from us. Bills and Bagels, great breakfast and an opportunity. So the next one is February 12th at the Nebo Building. So that's Saturday morning. Please come, please come and participate and talk to our senators and representatives. And, and it's, it's a perfect event. Write down a question and they will answer it. And, and that's a place where your voice can be heard. And again, a free breakfast is always welcome. So 7:30 a.m. at the Nebo Building on February 12th. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, Mayor, was that, that sometimes we get to be a part of the hiring process. And we, we, some of us sat in on hiring of Chief Rose, or Chief Johnson. And, and we'll be sitting in on the hiring of our new fire chief this, this week. And so that'll be coming, coming down the line. And that takes, takes a lot of, a lot of time to do, but for, for good reasons. Very, very important to do. And so hopefully soon we'll be reporting to the public of who our new fire chief will be in that position. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Argyle?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to echo a couple of things. I had the opportunity to go with the youth up to Legislative Day. And it was a really neat experience. We got an opportunity to meet some of our representatives. I want to echo what's been said. We have some representatives up there that are very knowledgeable and sharp about when it comes to some of the issues that are going on. They've sent out surveys. If you've had an opportunity, fill that out. I've been called back on the phone by them, asking questions. And, and that to me is, I know they're busy, but so important to take the time to say, hey, what you asked was important to me. And it means that it's important to you when you called me back and asked me more questions. And, and we're represented by, by some good people up there. I just mentioned that Utah State is changing, is going to change our flag that we have right now. When the youth had an opportunity to participate in that, there was a lot of youth there from all over our state. And in just a few short minutes, they had an opportunity, they were handled just a little late by 11 piece, sheet of paper, and asked to just put some ideas on about a future flag. And there was 19 of our youth. I mean, I was impressed with what they wrote, some of the things and the ideas and the knowledge that they had about our Utah State flag that is just now. It hasn't been changed since 1913. So they're looking to change it because they want to represent as our state has grown and the growth of our state, and represent all, all the people that live in our state now. One thing that they did have, they had a flag ceremony and they had announcement when they announced this flag, and the importance of our flag and the rep, what it represents. They also had the eight Native American nations that called Utah home. Each of them were dressed in costume for the, and it's not costume, but traditional gown as they presented this. So they posted the, the colors of the United States, the Utah flag, and then those eight flags from those Native American nations. And I was impressed and, and neat that our state represents them and that they are a part of a nation. And that's part of our flag now and will, I hope, continue. This is a good opportunity to go up there and see. Take time. There, there's some critical issues going on now that will affect us very personally. If, and we need to be involved in that. Give them a call. Take time to listen to what's going on up there. To me, the biggest thing was a tax cut. Everybody wants a tax cut. Even if it's a dollar, it's a tax cut. In my pocket's better than your pocket, right? One other thing I want to mention, so I don't know if it was, I think it was brought up in a previous council meeting. Our permits that were given out for homes last year, 466, Dave, was that right?
It was close to 600.
Oh, six.
Close to 600.
So, close to 600. So I don't have my numbers right. But that was the building permits that was issued during 2021. Not, not very often. I, I have moved to a new neighborhood and I've had an opportunity to meet some of those people that's moved to our community. And as a council and mayor, I just want to welcome the hundreds of people that's come and brought their families. I know why they're coming to Spanish Fork. I've lived here my whole life. It's a great place to raise, it's a safe place to raise your family. And I know why they're coming. But I want to say welcome to them and get involved in our community. We just heard about some of the surveys and some questions that we had from our community. And how important that is for us to be attentive to those, just like the legislative, if we get those questions. Our email address and phone numbers are on the website. And I promise you, if you send me a question personally, I'll call you or I'll come and visit you. I know we have issues. And, and it's neat to know that you're involved in them. But I think it's, our city is growing and continues to grow. And there is a lot of people coming from all over this nation, moving to our community. And we just want to welcome them and make sure that they feel a part of our community. Spanish Fork is unique in our volunteers and, and the way we do our city and the way they rerun and do things. And I'm grateful to have those new people in our community, grateful to have the existing citizens also. I am grateful for the opportunity to serve them and represent them. And just want to know that I'm always there. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Argyle. Well said. Yeah, echo a little bit what's been said here. I've sent Nick some, some pictures of up at the legislature. Councilman Argyle, great job. The, the first time that he sat on the, the Youth City Council Committee. And, and he showed him around very well along with Tara up at the Capitol. And good job, Travis. I saw, I saw a little excerpts of that on, on our TV channel. And that was just a good, a good tour to take in person and then a good tour to see on TV. So, so very, very cool. I always tell people, Councilman Marshall and I were, were up there yesterday, 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 and found one of our constituents, Lieutenant Governor Henderson. It's funny, that's how Mike Maurer comes up to us and says, oh, I, I better have your, your resident come, come beat you up a little. So she didn't. But she loves Spanish Fork. And I'm, we're super proud to have a great representative in Deidre, Lieutenant Governor Henderson. Speak about Spanish Fork, you know, speak for the state and do the good work she's doing. Every time I'm in the rotunda of the Capitol, I have to snap a picture up of one side of the rotunda. If Spanish Fork residents don't know that we're famous, we're famous. We, we made it on the rotunda of the Capitol with, with Escalante and Dominguez coming into the valley. So I just think that's really cool and try to point it out to, to everybody that, that will listen to me while I'm there. And that's not much people. I don't know. They listen to Councilman Marshall pretty-
I didn't know this, so this-
You didn't know this? This is new? You spent a little time up there in your career and you never knew that?
I didn't know.
Doesn't look up.
We, we had the chance to meet with the Senate President. We had the chance to meet with our legislators. We had the chance to meet with the Speaker of the House. And the discussions were fruitful in the way of, when we talk about Spanish Fork, it sure seems like people listen. I don't think they need to, they're, they're placating us or anything like that. But Shane can back me up on this, that it was said in our meeting of, of discussions about South Utah County and Spanish Fork specifically, that it was told to us, hey, we use Spanish Fork quite a bit to show the example of how to do it in cities across the state. So it does speak to, you know, not just, just us, obviously, of, of the work we're trying to do as a council, but our, our staff certainly, that does a great job in the day-to-day operations of our city. So kudos to, kudos to us for years past and years present, trying to do it right. Bills and Bagels on Saturday, like Councilman Gordon mentioned, yeah, these representatives are very responsive. We appreciate their good work on our behalf. And they will, they will call you back. They will text you back. So, so feel free to reach out. Let's see, anything else there? I don't think so. The other meetings that I attended last week, the Utah Municipal Power Association, UMPA, you hear it called quite a bit, sit on that board, and an SUVPS board. Power is super important in Spanish Fork as a power city. It's not, it's not just power city, maybe how Brandon Gordon used it, power, you know, back in high school. But it's, it's the actual electricity that we use, that we consume and the way that we are part of an organization with Provo City, with Salem City, with Levan, with Nefi, and Salem as a co-op that buy our power together. And that organization really does have a mix. When you, when you live in Spanish Fork and you're consuming electricity, just know it's coming from a broad mix of how it's, how it's generated. Water, some coal, natural gas, solar, and wind, all together is, is the power you're consuming inside, inside the city. So pretty neat to, to see how that works. The ins and outs of selling power and buying power on the grid. Very, very cool to have UMPA in our city. It's just off First South, down by our Public Safety Building. But, but they do a great job for us and, and excited to serve on that board and represent our city. Finally, she was brave enough to come up and speak to Councilman Marshall and I at, at the Bills and Bagels Saturday morning. And so we asked her to come speak to us today. We were impressed by her. So we've invited Rachel Gardner from the United Way to come speak to us and let us know what's going on and maybe how her organization can help, help our citizenry down here. Thanks for coming, Rachel.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Looks like my formatting, my feel a little off on the PowerPoint I made, but it's no problem. So like you said, I'm Rachel Gardner from United Way of Utah County. And I'm on the Resource Development Team there. So working with fundraising and connecting communities and companies to the resources that we work with and our programs. So to give some background, United Way in Utah County started in the 60s and has grown and innovated since then to become what it is today. And each, every two to three years, we conduct a community needs assessment to determine what are the needs in the community. And I'm a public health graduate, so that really resonated with me. And I started working there. I like to see that we're proactively innovating and changing to reflect what is needed. So these programs reach to Spanish Fork. And I don't know if a lot of you know about them. So I wanted to give just a little background about it. So we have three focus areas, education, emotional health, and financial stability. And there are a myriad of programs that fall under each of those. But those are our main focuses that we want to cover so that we can address the needs of children and families. And here's an example of kind of what it looks like. For everyday support, which is our financial stability, we try to focus first on a community-wide impact with our larger programs. And then there are more focused impact programs and individual impact programs. And some of these are funded agency partners. So we don't work with them maybe completely directly, but we help fund and funnel people to those programs as they're needed. One of our programs that I really wanted to focus on is 211. Maybe you've heard of this one. It's a phone number you can call or also an app that you can download to get connected to resources in the community. You have on the app, this is a screenshot of the app right there, all of these different things that you can click on. And then you can adjust what your location is in the county or even to other areas in the United States. We partner with other United Ways around the United States to help you define what you need in your area. So it'll pull a list of all the resources. If you tap on mental health, it'll pull up all of the different doctors and psychiatrists and those kind of things in the area. And you can make favorites. It's really cool. And you can also talk to someone on the phone if you prefer that. So that's something that I hope more residents and council members are aware of so that you can refer your residents to that. So just in conclusion, we really want to continue fostering our partnership with everyone here in United, United Way and Spanish Fork. We want to be more involved. And we do different things, employee giving campaigns, sponsorships, volunteering, corporate gifts. Those things work with companies, but also we do federated campaigns as well. And we also have worked with other cities in the county to do something we call an Everyday Strong City. So that means that you partner more with us on that. And Everyday Strong is a program that focuses on resilience training for parents and teachers, but also can extend to other residents, too. And it has been a great opportunity for us in the schools to get connected and help parents know how to work with their children. parents know how to work with their children and address the mental health needs that have become ever so increasing in the county. So if you're interested in more information, I have lots to share, but just to keep it concise, that's what I have for you. And I brought some resources, paper pamphlets and my business card in the back if you'd like to learn more.
Perfect. Any questions for Rachel?
No, I'm glad you brought things because I was going to ask questions and I'll look through things and I'm sure we can answer that something here on Spanish Fork.
Yes.
Rachel, which cities in Utah County would you say are currently really involved in working with the United Way?
Probably the most involved are Provo and Orem, but we work with all of them. I think Vineyard has increasingly worked with us, Pleasant Grove. We are in all of the cities, especially all the three school districts that are in Utah County, we're very well partnered with them. But in South County, we're really wanting to increase the partnership and become more involved. So, yeah.
Thank you for being in touch.
Thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it. Maybe this is something Seth, Nick, that could be a link on our website that gets people to an app or a number like that? That's probably a good start.
Yeah, if you have some information, if you want to just grab some or bring that over to us, we can take it and then where they are a community organization, we can do some things in our newsletter as well as other venues as well, so we can have Nick work on that.
In the Chamber of Commerce as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Do you have anybody that would like to be president of the chain?
Even one of our boards, so it's a good...
Oh, good. That's good to hear. Good. Good. Thanks again, Rachel. Appreciate you coming. Okay, that'll take us out of council comments and now to consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon and seconded by Councilwoman Beck to approve the consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, takes us to item number seven, a public hearing, ordinance 822, amending Title 15 requiring address change for annexed properties. Vaughn, Pecquell.
Mayor and council, this is a change to our ordinance to have a requirement for when we have newly annexed property, so they change their address from a county address to a city address. That's primarily for emergency services so they can find the location without the conflicting addresses. We want it, all our Spanish Fork property to be addressed with a Spanish Fork address. There's a letter in the agenda there that would go out to the property owner saying that what's going to happen, kind of outlines the process for changing the address. The city takes on the obligation to notify the different entities, but there's some things where we can't do, like if they need to change their own address with their banks and other types of accounts that they have, then they'll have to do that. It also puts the burden on them to change their own address marker and on their mailbox and things like that. So that's the proposal for the ordinance tonight. If you have any questions about that, you have to try to answer.
Vaughn, what do you guys, sorry, what's the city or how have you approached address changes or annexations in the past? Are there addresses that will need to be changed because of this or is this just going forward?
Well, I mean, that's a good question.
This is, we have always made changes, this just gives us more of a timeframe to do it. There may be an address here or there that needs to be brought into compliance. It won't be something that you can just have a county address. If you are in the city, you will need to be on the city's address system.
Thank you.
And kudos to Sean because when I worked for the phone company, I worked with Sean and when you guys would annex property, it just doesn't change the cities. I mean, it changes all of the big companies that serve and everything else and Sean Beecher was absolutely the Tom to make sure that is done as far as the city's concerned.
Yeah.
But that part of the individual resident needs to give it.
He's been great, he's the one that took the lead on this issue. And now we have this kind of one-month timeframe to get that taken care of.
I like it.
Perfect. Thanks Vaughn. This is a public hearing, so we'll need a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Gordon to go into public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in public hearing, anybody from the public that wants to speak to this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Argyle to go out of public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, back to here. Any other questions for Vaughn or anybody about this? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 8-22, amending Title 15 requiring address change for annexed properties.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Argyle to approve this ordinance. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, moves us to 8A of New Business, ordinance 922, amending section 4840 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code pertaining to firefighter retirement benefit. Mr. Jordan?
Yep. So we have a fire retirement benefit for our volunteer firefighters. They have to have served for 20 years in that capacity and have reached age 62 and have retired. They can't be actively serving in that capacity. So this is simply to increase the benefit. We can call it a cost of living adjustment, if you will, so to increase it by $4 a month or $48 each year. Yeah. So any questions about this benefit?
How often do we look at it?
How often do we look at it? This is to approve the same contribution increase for through 2026. It looks like last time we had amended this was in 2013, so. So there's a fire retirement board and the public safety director sits on that, the mayor, the city finance director and then some fire people, somebody that's retired, current fire association president in the past, fire association president that sits on that board. And I know that Lynn Jones, who's the retired firefighter, that he likes to go and deliver those checks, you know, and he says, you know, it's so appreciated by those that have served our community and they really appreciate that benefit, so.
Cool. Good.
This isn't something that we talk about a whole lot, not because we don't want to, but we just, it's not something that we talk about. It started many, many years ago for the volunteers as they served and there aren't that many people that are on it. You have to, it requires a 20-year commitment at a minimum, but the people that are on there, as you read those names, you'll know their names, you'll know who they are and they're just pillars of the community for many reasons, but of course in this sense because they served on that fire department for so long, you know, at some point in their lives.
Pretty problem there. A lot of them are 62, but they're not done. They still want to help, so they don't retire.
There's a couple in that situation.
Thanks, Jordan.
Sometimes when you're 62, you're just getting started.
Just getting going. Yeah.
Well said. Well said.
Any other questions for Mr. Hales?
Thanks, Jordan.
Okay. If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve 09-22, amending section 4.08.040 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code pertaining to firefighter retirement benefit increase.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Argyle, seconded by Councilman Gordon. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, takes us to B, ordinance 1022, amending section 1012110 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code pertaining to angle parking.
Okay, we had a resident call and complained because a neighbor had turned them in for parking not parallel in the cul-de-sac and said it was against law. We looked it up and it was against law in our city and did a little bit of research and in some areas, like the whole country of Canada actually requires you to park at an angle, not parallel in a cul-de-sac. And after researching this, we felt like it would be appropriate to allow it in cul-de-sacs. And so this is just that minor change.
Did you bring up Canada just so we would do the opposite? Or what was the reasoning?
Yeah.
We shouldn't have referenced that. Okay. Duly noted, Tara.
Think about that.
Just kidding, Chris.
Chris, just any angle, whatever you want?
Yeah.
And travel is weird in a circle, but...
Yeah, it's hard.
Straighten it on an angle, doesn't matter, we're just, you can park differently in cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
I live in a cul-de-sac, so I could have been calling the cops on my kids every time they came over.
Yeah, and we would have changed this sooner.
Maybe you.
It might have been your name.
I have a driveway. The kids that don't live with me park parallel.
No reason to get defensive.
Any other questions for Chris?
We have a traffic safety committee which is made up of EMS, police, the fire, the engineering and the streets and I brought this to them and they thought it would be a good idea, so they're recommending this be approved.
So angle parking elsewhere is still illegal, right?
Unless it's actually strike for that, is what the ordinance says.
Well, I move to approve, are we good? Can I?
Yep.
I'll move to approve ordinance 1022, amending section 1012110 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code pertaining to angle parking.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, this is not a roll call vote, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Hail Canada. Did this pin change, do you?
No.
Canadian flag.
No.
Item C, ordinance 1112, amending section 13430 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code pertaining to service laterals.
This is also a pretty minor change. Just to clarify, we actually help with and do all of the structural damage repair on sewer laterals from the back of sidewalk of the road right of way into where the main is in the road. It's a pretty kind policy. It helps residents out quite a bit, but we needed to clarify this a little bit, that if you're in like maybe a townhome development and you're not on a road, maybe you're on a parking lot area, it doesn't count towards private property. It's only when your lateral goes into a public right of way where we control the excavation of work in there which would lead to damage to a lateral that this applies. So just wanted to make that clear, that if it's on non-public property, we're not going to take responsibility for those laterals.
So just clarifying what public property is?
Yeah, yeah. We're mostly just talking about deeded roads to the city. Once your lateral crosses that line, we have complete control of what excavation occurs and in theory, we can protect that lateral because we don't allow people to dig in our streets or under the sidewalk.
I guess too, once during installation, you have complete control over how is installed in the public right of way, but no, very little responsibility outside of it.
Yeah, not as much. I mean, we'll come, we'll have an inspector come out and inspect it for grade and things like that, but they don't watch the backfill, we don't get compaction tests on it. There's a lot of stuff that happens on the lateral on private property that we can't be responsible for. Good point.
And when you reference the line we're talking about, back of curb?
Back of sidewalk is the right of way line on a city street.
Okay.
My insurance cover that?
Well, it's funny you say that because Chris and I have had this conversation with the last few weeks, you know, I appreciate him bringing this up because most people don't realize that that could be something on your personal homeowner's insurance is a service line coverage as well as sewer backup. I always encourage people to make sure to look at your personal home policy and see if you don't have those benefits, what it costs to add and it's usually very minor, 15, 20 bucks a year and well worth it, something that's called upon quite often.
That $20 rider could save $15,000 on, even on newer homes, some of the settling can occur, especially on the private property end where we don't have as much control over the backfill. That's a really good rider to have. We encourage residents to get that rider.
My last home was built in '05 and in '12 I was digging mine up. And so it's seven years later because the settling that had happened, it pitched the main water line. So you bring up a good point.
I helped two neighbors dig up, there's what happened is the settling around the foundation of the house had taken the water lateral where it goes right into the concrete and had bent it and caused a little pin hole.
Exactly.
Type leak, yeah.
Thanks.
Brought to you by the Insurance Commissioner of Utah.
That's Mayor, that's former Mayor Pike.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Okay, any other questions for Chris? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve amending section 1304030 of the Spanish Fork Municipal Code pertaining to service laterals.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilman Euler. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Euler?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
That passes. Okay, takes us to item D of New Business, golf course irrigation system, change order number three.
Okay, we are really happy with the construction going on at the golf course. They're doing a great job on this sprinkler system, it's very well built. It's going to last forever, it seems like. And so as we got, going to where we have to cross Powerhouse Road to get to the back nine, it was called to be a bore, which means we don't dig up the road, we just get some heavy boring equipment in, we dig a big hole and we push a casing across the road and then we feed a pipe through that casing. As they got ready to do that bore, one of the things they have to do is they have to pothole all the utilities in the road, so they'll make a small cut in the road and they will use special, they're called jet diggers that actually shoot water and suck out the dirt and they'll find the utilities in the road. As they did this, they learned that one of the water lines was very deep in the road and there wasn't quite enough elevation difference between that and the next utility to risk boring through them because you're not real accurate with a bore, right? And so we had a couple of options. One, we dig a really deep bore hole and we do the bore, but on both sides, we're really deep and there'd be a lot of extra cost in that. But also, we weren't really excited to work on that, city crews on the pipeline that was that deep if it ever had a problem. Or we could open trench and then locate all these utilities and lay the pipe across that. Now, since the boring crew, which I don't want to be insensitive to those guys, I'm sure they're great guys and are interesting, but the boring crew was already mobilized and you have to pay for that mobilization and so, and with the open trench and all the utilities on a busy road, and we hate digging up this road by the way, it actually costs a bit more. So this change order is for that. I believe it's for around $10,000 or $11,000.
And their moab had been specified on their prior bid at their mobilization, which was to, was there were a sub, correct?
Yeah, so this, yeah, so this wasn't, mobilization was a bid item, but it was a real thing. They had everything out there and were digging, so.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Any other questions?
Don't do it, I'm not going to. No, so I have to ask something, right? It's construction on a road. Actually, I'm good with it. So your point is it's cheaper to open cut than it was to bore, but we are down the path of a boring so far that we need to pay for some of that work that they did. So overall, it's a little bit more money, it's 11, 7 more because of the change during the project.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a good point.
I'm not going to rush you on that now.
It's...
No, I'm serious, you're fair praise though.
It's a good point. In fact, when the engineer came in and explained this to me, I was like, we're going to pay more to open cut than bore and it's the same thing that Shane's seen in his career. Usually it's cheaper to open trench, but in this case, it's not. and it's, it's the same thing that Shane's seen in his career. Usually, it's cheaper to open trench, but in this case, it's not.
Just to give you a hard time, Chris, you are on the record saying that this sprinkler system will last forever.
Yeah, in my forever.
Stand up later and announce his retirement.
I like it.
I'm a little uncomfortable with that, too.
Forever.
Okay, if anybody doesn't have any more questions, I would entertain a motion on this.
I move to approve golf course irrigation system change order number three.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Marshall, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. This is a roll call vote, and we'll go, who are we on? Councilman Marshall starting us? Councilman Marshall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Euler.
Aye.
Passes. Okay, item E, library board appointments. Who's on the library board on this body?
Well, I am, but I don't have any appointments, nobody gave me anything.
It's on the agenda. They're in here, Angie Gorrell and Benjamin Sansom.
Oh, I see them now.
Are they existing members?
No, they would be new. We have two open spots, so I thought they were in like a side document. Like, I don't have that, but yep.
I was curious if you knew who the going out sport.
I'll find out.
I guess I shouldn't lay the, Councilwoman Beck, it's probably a mayor appointment.
I think the mayor.
It is.
Well, that's who I would appoint, that's who I would, I would say, I was gonna say subject, but no, we're not subjecting them to stuff, we're recommending them.
My day again.
Angie Gorrell and Benjamin Sansom to the library board. Second.
These are two names that have been reviewed and vetted by our library director, and he also recommends that they be appointed. He's been in communication with them. Both are in good standing with the library, as well as good patrons of the library.
He did let me know that one of them live up on the east side by me, so they must be good people, if they're in my neighborhood.
That's interesting, yeah. One of them also, not the same one, lives by me.
By Seth, yeah.
Yeah. One of these is a recent graduate of our Spanish Fork one oh one, and so a, a good way to put those residents that are interested about the city to work, if you will, so I think that's good.
And I like that she did come to you last summer, right, and say, hey, Seth, what can I do to be more involved? And since then, we've, we've given her some opportunities, so this will be good.
Be forewarned, you sent up through a one oh one. Your name will be on a council meeting, board appointments. That's good, good stuff. Okay, I don't think I can make a motion, but somebody can recommend it.
I move to accept the library board appointments for Angie Gorrell and Benjamin Sansom.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck and seconded by Councilman Argyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Welcome to the library board, Angie and Benjamin. Thanks for your service to Spanish Fork City. Excited to have you. Okay, item nine, discussion of reduced width intersections.
Okay, we're bringing, bringing up the intersection here.
So hopefully you guys have, you, you guys, sorry, hopefully Mayor, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have reviewed the details of what Chris will be talking about shortly. There's a lot of information that's in the, the agenda and the admin side of this discussion item. Actually, it's in the public content side, a lot of pictures as well. Chris will walk through a couple of things that we've, yeah, go ahead. He, he'll walk through a couple of things that we've done since we received a particular complaint, maybe a month, month and a half ago, but we're certainly interested in, in feedback from you as a mayor and councilman.
Zoom in right there.
Councilman Marshall.
We just wanted to make sure that you had an orientation of where we're going as we zoom in.
Tyler, can you come move and swap him?
It's only gonna get worse.
If you zoomed in just right on this, that would be good. I wanna see this intersection right here, but that closely. All right, and then push it down a little bit, so I can see a little bit. This is the intersection we wanna see, but I wanna show all this construction. Okay, so we received a report from a fellow living on this corner here, and his concern was, and if you could zoom out a little bit to include that construction area.
Stop it, Chris, we can, we know what it looks like.
So what happened is, since this subdivision started in construction, a lot of construction traffic came through this area, and they would cut the corner here in order to get up here and, and do a lot of the earthwork. I imagine as homes get built, you'll have similar situations, and trying to cut this corner, they often destroy the grass on, on his corner, and so he, he's written a, a well thought out, a very good email asking us to reconsider how we do these reduced width intersections, and so we had, had a little engineering study be done on this, going through complaints and, and some of the things that, that we deal with in regards to the reduced width intersections. They researched, we, we have a log of complaints, and, and, and this is actually the first time we got the complaint on, on actually driving over the curb on this. There was an accident here, and so we researched some accident data, and it appears that accidents on these intersections are, are the exact same as accidents on any other type of intersection, so the accident data didn't show that you had more accidents on an intersection like this, but he's not making up this concern. It's, it's a real concern. It's, it's hard for the big trucks to, to maneuver around that corner, and we actually went to twenty different homes that were on corners like this, and we interviewed them, and we just talked to them about the concerns, and there was one other resident on one of these homes that said, yeah, I remember when the houses were being built around me, that, that occurred, but it hasn't been a problem since. This home has been built for some time, and so this resident's concern came up once the construction starts, so it, it kinda lends us to get the opinion that this is mostly a construction issue, and it's not so much an issue when there's, when there's not construction. That being said, the purpose of this is to slow down traffic and make it hard to maneuver through an intersection, so you slow down. And, and they, they, they did some counts on how many complaints we have on speeding along roads, and, and we're north, we're, we're in the thousands of those, and a lot of those studies on the speeding actually ended with, we need some sort of physical restriction caused in the streets to slow people down.
Just, just to be clear though, Chris, those thousands weren't at intersections like this.
No, it would be more like this.
Generally, we have comments about speeding, but not necessarily relationship to this.
Yeah. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be speeding from this, it'd be speeding from that. And so, so we kinda looked at this in a lot of ways, so, so if you can reduce the width of the intersection along a straightaway, then that's actually a really good way to, to reduce, to reduce speeds in a way that, that doesn't involve more law enforcement, which doesn't seem to work, you know, as far as common things. Seems like the signs that we put up sometimes work for a little bit, but then, long term, they don't work. And so there is a good point made that there's not ever gonna be a speeding problem here at a T intersection, and, and in a recent subdivision, we actually didn't put the bulbs here, but we had them here, and so it just comes around, and then it, and then it matches into here, so that you, you didn't have the turning problem as much, and I, and I think that's, that's, that's kind of, that's good practice. I think, I think that's one thing that we can learn from this, this fellow's experience.
Would you say that one more time?
So, so Shane's point was that it's, it's never a speeding problem coming, approaching a T intersection from this, and so the need for this bulb out is, is not for speeding issues, and so it, in the last intersection, last subdivision, we designed or helped design, we, we did the bulb out so that it, it restricted it in this direction, where there is a possibility of speeding issue, but not in this direction, and, and that, and that's a good design change, I think.
Chris, how does the corner radius look on those new designs that you're doing?
It'd be the same radius.
So it's not as narrow on the T or the south part, it's still the same radius?
Yeah. The radius is, the, the radii are designed for, you know, the RC Willie truck, if you will. Another thing that we kinda talked about is, well, how do we help this guy right now? Cause he has a big problem, and there's not a lot of houses built here yet, so this problem's gonna continue for some time, and so one of the thoughts that we had is, well, you can put a rock here, we've done that before, and it's very effective. People are scared to rub their cars against rocks. Apparently, there's damage, so. Yeah, but he, he has nice grass here, and, and he's, he's installed a sprinkler system in here several times, and so we thought it might be good to not wreck that with the big old rock, if you wanted one, I think that would work, but if you look over here on the angle parking by Senior Center, we put a little Chevron sign. It's a metal, thick metal sign, it would scrape up a vehicle just as well as a rock, I think, and people would be scared of it, and so that's one of our thoughts, is just putting one right there on the corner, and so people would be more cautious, you know, not say, well, I'll just drive over the curb. Maybe they'll wait until it's clear or swing wider or something to help with that, but anyway, those are some of the things that came out of this study. The, the fact that we restrict, the intersection is, is actually an LID or a low impact development issue, not so much as speeding, speeding was one of the reasons, but, but anytime you can reduce the impervious area, that's good. It also is for safety of sidewalks, so that, you know, you, you don't cross as far across the sidewalk. It keeps vehicles out of intersections where there's sight distance issues and things like that, so, so there's some safety issues, there's some, you know, less pervious, impervious area and, 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 you know, pedestrian safety issues here, but that's kinda how we got where we are, that's kinda what the findings of the, of the study came out.
It's the people that bring the trusses to every one of these houses, and they're gonna run over that road, and I don't care if you put a rock or not, cause they're gonna run over it. The truck driver took his truck down here. This is a hard intersection, this is too. For me to get over to here and get around him, especially even coming this way, because this, because you don't have any, you don't have any way to narrow. With a short trailer, it was all I could do to get around that corner and stay, and stay out of his yard, but it took everything I could do to stay out of it, and I drove through both of them. If you have a longer trailer, which they do, the truck, those trusses have long trailers, they won't metal link this section. If you put a rock there, they'll go down to this one. I, I don't, if you could get them to go out, I don't know what to do, but you can't make that intersection. Putting a sign or a rock is not gonna fix that problem, cause they have two longer trailers to get around that corner. That, I don't know. So at my house, when I measured that right there, and at my house, it's like his comes out real quick, like that, and then, and where the others kinda gradually come out. It's, there's a little bit of difference there, but this intersection is a tight intersection.
Yeah.
And, and yes, when the construction goes away, that maybe fixes it or changes it, but that's not, it.
Is, is part of the problem, Chris, that they're taking the left turn too soon and coming down this road, when maybe they should be coming down this one?
Yeah, there's limited access to this development, mostly because of where it is, I mean, but that means.
Coming in right here. Sign here that says, "Construction trucks or construction vehicles, next left."
Come this way. Yeah, we, we could look at that.
Yeah, I, it, it honestly is a very narrow intersection.
This would be a better route in.
It would, to come in on this eighth north. This, this street is, it's really the, this is a, it is a white street till you get to there. It's a, it's a nice road down till you get to his corner.
That, that fixes things during construction, but for me, I'm looking at a picture of a FedEx truck parked on the most strip sent by this resident. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a situation long after.
Amazon everywhere.
Yeah, yeah, you know, and so I understand what we're talking about and like the idea of, hey, we want you to go up and around, even approving a different truck route temporary, even if it had a washout or something, and it was a dirt road for the trusses, when we've gotta bring those in, however.
I think the T intersection issue kinda helps with that concern, but we do not wanna to leave the restricting intersections that are throughs. We, we feel like there are so many more people in the camp of wanting to slow traffic down on those situations, but again, if you don't restrict it on the T, then I think that issue goes away.
One thing you can do here is to increase the width, and this was something that, that our traffic folks, as they studied it, if you'll zoom in just tighter on that particular intersection, and you can do this on, on any intersection that has the, the bulb. You can restrict parking for a segment there on the, on that north part of it, where there shouldn't be any parking right there anyway, because of the width of the road, and so if you do have a car that is there, that will significantly change the turning radius as well.
So you're saying, like, if they have guests, they can't park there?
Absolutely.
Normally.
I think that's ridiculous to make roads so skinny that their guests can't even park in front of someone's house.
Yeah, in this case, in this particular one, they would have to park in the driveway, like your kids didn't, or on either end of the bulb out.
Yeah, but I like to throw parties, Seth, so I would say.
This would not be the house.
My road's super skinny, so park or walk away.
This would not be the house for your party, yeah.
So, at T intersections, we always have a fire hydrant right here, and it's illegal to park within fifty feet of it anyway, but yeah.
Well, let, let's not get too serious in, into the details of that. We're trying to look at these issues here at, from a general standpoint, and so I'm sure we can find an intersection that's, that's different than, than this, but for all of these intersections where we have reduced width, you're not supposed to park there anywhere, because of the width.
But I think this is a good visual for us, because when we go to approve things, it is hard to just visualize it on a map. This is very visual for me in looking at the videos that you've shared and he's shared, and pictures, and there's someone coming around the corner, and someone's pulling like an RV, that that's gonna happen years down the road, irrelevant, there's construction around the corner.
Nick, can you go this direction? I, I just wanna go that little farther north and east. Keep going. I just, okay, so, now you lost me. Go, go north a little more, or up, or which, yeah. Keep going, a little bit farther. Okay, so, and, and the only reason I'm bringing this is, so this is my house right here. I live on this corner right here. All of these homes are in, under construction right now. My intersection has, but it's not as extreme as his. I have, you can see, so you can see, it, it comes in on all four corners, even this dead end. I think.
You think they may be.
At least twenty times, my road's, that's been run over, because you, you can't fix. I can't say that, can I? These truck drivers don't pay attention when they're making these turns. This turn is very easyable to make and not go over these corners. The intersection is big enough here. This is a bigger intersection, cause it's not a T, I, I understand that, but it still has the hourglass or the globe, whatever you're calling. His intersection does not. His intersection does not, you can, you cannot.
It's narrower here, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
It wasn't built to code exactly.
And I don't, his, his is, his is different. Those two intersections, I didn't go anywhere else, but those two intersections are, are different. And this, and obviously, this started when the construction started, because it's the trucks, the dump trucks, I think, are okay. It's the trucks bringing in materials that have trailers and other things, and that's, that's, that's going to continue, and I don't know how you, I don't know how you fix that.
Are the radiuses the same on this corner as the other ones?
Yeah, they would be.
They're not.
That, that width is the same.
These, this is the same, but this isn't the same.
21.
This would come right there.
Is it 22 feet, right, from curb to curb? Is it 22?
Yeah, and it's the same as the other intersection and this intersection are the same.
I'd say it was 29 less.
I don't think it was, I think his was four feet shorter.
It's supposed to be 23 feet.
Supposed to be 23?
23.
From.
That's not curb to curb?
It's gutter to gutter.
I felt, I saw, yeah.
It's all right, it's, it's okay, as long as we're using the same measuring points, we're using the same measuring point.
Yeah, foot and a half from the curb on each side, right, that's three.
You can see it's kind of rounded.
Forgot it.
So, one of the challenges that we're, we have been trying to alleviate is poor computer management.
Nick, no pressure, the world's watching.
No one's watching right now.
One of the challenges we've been trying to alleviate with, with these reduced width intersections is something that, that happens in a number of places around town, and that is these streets where we have a lot of speeding, and you just don't see it here, versus in the street, maybe close to you, Councilman Oiler.
That is, that was, this is yours.
They're, they're the same, Councilman Oiler.
So, main purpose, or one of the purposes that Seth has mentioned.
Yeah, they're both.
Is to reduce speeding, which then is to hopefully reduce accidents, right? Have we been able to show through numbers and data that accidents in these have been less, or reduced compared to where we don't have them?
I imagine that would be a good study, nothing other than just like national studies. One thing, though, is a lot of what we're talking about is where this is on a T intersection, and so I, I think the concerns go away when this.
Removing it on that.
Yeah, you want it on the through, but I think the concerns go away when this is wide, so I think, I think we've found the solution to.
The long term.
This fellow.
For future developments.
Yeah.
When we started doing this 10-plus years ago.
And this was one of the first developments to go in with that.
Yeah, we decided to do that, right? And what, it seems like other cities are following suit, right?
Yeah, in fact, we copied Provo, who had been doing it for 10 years previous to us, so it was kind of. But it's, the, there is a, a, a large number of engineers and planners that say, reduce the road widths and create pinch points wherever you can, and, and, and there's been a lot of studies that say that makes streets much safer, and it's also a lot cheaper to maintain. Asphalt maintenance is linear in cost, so it's not, it's very expensive to widen a road, and it's been shown over and over again that it's unsafe to widen a road.
Now, Chris, you're saying, for future developments, it's just the one side of the road that wouldn't have the bulb, this side would still have it?
So, so you have the, the through traffic right here, and, and you want to restrict, so let's, let's imagine this road extends over here, extends way down over there, it becomes a cut through, right? People wanting to get over to the school, or wherever, we get lots of complaints on roads like this for speeding. And so what you want to do is, you want to pinch the traffic down at intersections, slow them down, this is where pedestrians cross, this is where there's a conflict point with, with traffic coming from another direction, and, and that has been proven to be safer. There's, there's another general thing, and that is, our roads are 29 feet of asphalt. You have another five feet, you know, behind the asphalt to the edge of curves, but that's a narrower road. And so there's, there's a lot of aspects to this, but the studies bear out that the narrower roads, especially when they have pinch points, are safer. People drive slower, it's harder to manipulate through these intersections, which slows people down, and people don't get killed when they're slowly turning a corner, or, or approaching an intersection, and so.
Let me take you to, to one intersection that's changed our, our neighborhood, 1430 East and 130 North, and I think this'll, this'll talk about why you don't throw, you know, the baby out with the bath water necessarily, on, on pinch points in roads. It might have been that, right here.
Right there.
That Councilman Argyle moved from this area, so their reduction of speeding automatically. But this is a game changer for all these neighborhoods that are around here, including the Menon Halls that are down this way, and it's this pinch that changed that game. And I know when people, when it was not in one day, and it was in the next day, people were like, what the heck is the city doing? Well, I've hit this curb twice with, with my tire, thinking I have the room, and I don't.
Tara, you got that? Thank you.
But you can hit a curb, as long as you don't.
No, it's on the record.
It's just putting more money, more money in the tire.
If you do it once, it's okay.
Yeah, I did it twice, I did it twice. The, the movement you have to make here is so much slower and cautious, because you don't want to hit these curbs anymore, and this traffic here, it pinches it down to the kids that are walking across here, and, and these people couldn't park anymore, and if, you know, these people couldn't either. But this road is a design that has changed the whole, the whole area of, of the neighborhoods around this. And so if we have some places that are certainly coming down to Ts, where maybe it, you know, was designed too tight on, on both ends, I, I get, I get looking at one-off that way, but I'm telling you, overall, reducing a through street, just like what you talked about, the game changer for the whole, that whole area of Spanish Fork.
We struggled with this one, too, because this family had quite a few driver-aged kids, and all of a sudden, all of this parking went away, and they'd have to park it down over here. But it did make a big difference, the, the traffic was really fast on this road, and we had to find a place to cross the school traffic, and, and we're really concerned about having them cross here with the speeds that we were seeing on that road, and so that, that really helped.
And they're using it.
Yeah.
Yeah, the kids do use it, good. I'm good. So, I feel like I have to say something, right? I just have to, this is, this is my thing, right? Back to the subject intersection, these work, period, they work, as intended, they slow people down, period, they work. I invite you to come over on 11th East and sit outside my house for a little while, and watch how a wide road works. There's oodles of places to park, and, and your folks are welcome to come over and park in front of my home during your party, because there's plenty of places to park.
I'll shuttle them to the party.
I will, I will do that. I will shuttle them. It is, it is well above 35 most of the time. Narrow streets do what they, we intended them to do, and that is slow people down, and it makes it safer, period. On the subject property, it's designed for that Amazon truck to not be in their curb. That's, you can't, you can't, I know what Chad was going to say, and I'm, I'm tempted to say, you can't teach stupid, right? I mean, you can't. You, you can make that curb, you can make that turn. Now, I do agree that across the, the T, that that should be a red curb, so you can't park there, right? You can't make the turn if someone's parked there, so I like that. I like your long-term solution of narrowing up the one T side, I think that is going to help a lot, and I think you put a sign there. That will not stop that truck driver that has a too long of load for that curb, he's going to run it over, because he doesn't have a choice. To Chad's point, you can't make it if you're in a, in a belly dump, right? And you shouldn't be in that neighborhood if you're in a belly dump. So I, I like the idea of bringing that sign out to the front of the neighborhood and saying, hey, construction traffic, go around and go on the right path.
No, I think that's good.
I'm 100% with Mike, we cannot throw out a good standard because of one solution, but we can modify it, we can adjust it to make it better, but it is something that works. And we were here, like, I think it was my second, second city council meeting, and someone came in off of Center Street and said, you need to do something with speeding on Center Street. There is nothing to do with speeding on Center Street, it's just too wide, to slow people down.
Go faster.
It's that wide.
It is that wide, right? It truly is that wide.
Get through it quicker.
And Matt and Chief Johnson can sit out there all day long, and they're only, and people will only slow down when the lights go on, they, because they don't even know. I know for sure that the people going fast on 11th East are parents of kids that would, there are parents that would just be furious if people were driving that fast in front of their house, but they have no idea they're going that fast, because you just don't know, until you get in a place like this, and you go, wait a second, I need to slow down. So, I love where we're headed, but I do appreciate the person on the corner that we need to make adjustments, in order to make sure that we don't have people driving on their lawn every day. So, I like your recommendations, Chris, I support them 100%, but I am not in favor of increasing widths anywhere.
Yeah, me neither.
No, just so the residents know, I agree with them, I want wide roads, too.
I appreciate where you're coming from, come on 11th, hang out.
I know, I, I see the speeding, and I get it, I wish there was a happy medium. I think some roads are too wide, and I live in a subdivision where there's wide roads, and there, there is speeding. But there's like, it, it's finding that balance, when you're pulling things and coming in and out, and your Amazon deliveries, like, in my cul-de-sac, there's, I have the Amazon trucks there at least five times a day.
Tiny little van.
Easy.
They can't make that turn.
But then you have, like, kids out playing, and then you have.
And they go slow.
You have the, you know, RVs, or teenagers, I don't know, it's.
It, I, I'm with you.
I'm not sold on it, but.
I'm with you, I think it's a balance overall, right?
Yeah.
I think you, those things you mentioned are legitimate concerns, pushing snow on narrow roads are legitimate concerns. They happen 10, 15 days a year, and people are driving on them 365 days a year, and they're going fast 365 days a year. So I would rather design a road for those 360 days.
That's a good point.
And I think, I, to your concern, Councilwoman Beck, I, I concur, I wish there was a happy medium, and the best solution would be that people slow down, right? I mean, just slow down. Unfortunately, we drive to our comfort level, and so I, I drive on 11th East because it's kind of wide open and straight, without knowing I'm going 35 to 40. And when I look down, I think, oh my gosh, and, and maybe I slow down, or maybe I say, well, I'm almost there, I'll just keep going, right? In, in your neighborhood, I love how wide those roads are, and some of the soft, but kind of hard turns, because.
It slows it down.
No, that's when I get to feel, I get to feel the performance of my vehicle, right?
Chief, do you know what?
Exactly, right, that's the point, that's the point I'm making.
Okay.
Right, and so, and so our road design unintentionally causes us sometimes to drive in ways that aren't safe. And if we could redo your neighborhood, for example, we'd, we'd pinch down a few places, and I think you.
Then I'd have to hire, like, shuttle things for my.
Well, not in your, in your cul-de-sac, you're going to be fine, because you can angle park, which means you can maximize, yeah.
Be arrested.
Yeah, you've got so much parking, it's not even, it's not even funny.
It's all about steps, we, we need more steps, we need to be healthier, parking down the road a little bit is good, it's healthy.
It's good.
Okay, so we're going to help this guy, we're going to.
Yeah, we, we'll do what we can, I, I, I think, I think for the next few years, while they're building those homes, or if it's like some of these subdivisions for the next nine months, when they're all built out, it's going to be, it's going to be rough, and so we'll do what we can.
If he lacks the idea of a sign, I'm comfortable with that, because I promise, if I'm working for a company, and I hit the sign, and I scrape the side of the box truck, pickup truck, whatever it is.
Turn on accidents again.
It's going to be, it's going to be something, it's going to get their attention.
And when you're printing signs, go ahead and print like five, because you'll be replacing them for the next year.
Oh, nice, no, that's a good point. It's, it's a.
Those are, we start a lot of those, eh?
We'll know when we know.
Construction traffic going to the old Slant Road is a good.
If that's, and that's a, granted, Slant Road's not, no wide road either, especially that turn right there. A Slant Road is a bad turn, but it's such a, it's, it's away from, it's away from the residents, and get it, get that away from him. One comment, I wish there was some way to, to slow people down, I do. I guarantee you, when people talk about Salt Lake City, they don't talk about their narrow roads. Salt Lake was designed, what, 150 years ago, and they always comment on how beautiful and wide their roads are. Now, there's all kinds of things that change and control that and everything else, but they don't come and say, you know, Salt Lake's great, because all of its narrow roads. That's, that's my thought about the widening and then narrowing of roads, I'm not a huge fan of always narrowing those roads. But what they did on 1430 slowed people down, some of that stuff like that. Those flashing lights on 4th North, where you go into Reese, love that, that's all that needed, I mean, there was a huge problem there, that fixes, there's still traffic issues, but we hope we fix that on down the road. But maybe just getting the construction out, out from there would, would really help, because you're not, you're not going to get the FedEx guys to go elsewhere, they, they should be able to make that turn.
Yeah, I think.
It's, it's, it's a long trailer that can't, and if there is somebody parking there, you will never make that turn. And I would not go that way if I was in a truck, I wouldn't, I would pull out to see there's cars there, I wouldn't go back that direction, but anyway.
At my office, I have a rock, turning it off the approach, because they run, there's two approaches.
I've got to hit that one, too.
And in between the two approaches, there's grass, and, and so we have a rock, but it's not a big enough rock, and so it gets drug into the parking lot three or four times through the snow season, and.
Wait, wait, before you go away, so, before we go to where Chris wants to go, Councilman Oiler asked, how about accidents? You can turn on a layer on our maps, if you go down to public safety, an accident layer, and, and you can see all these little points are accidents, according to this data, which is good, but it's not perfect, in, in terms of its completeness. There are no accidents on record at this subject intersection, which is right there.
There is one, or we, we made aware of one.
They barely had one here.
Did the, did the police come out?
Yeah, we, we, I haven't seen that, so I don't know anything about that. But this, and this also isn't up to date to the last month.
This isn't too, yeah, that accident will come probably in the next.
But if, and I've asked for that detail, and I haven't seen it, so I don't, I actually don't know what happened. But, so to your point, there is, there isn't a number of accidents here, so is that because of the bulb out, or is that because of other reasons? You don't know.
It's the bulb out.
It's the bulb, survey says. All right, wherever Chris wanted to go.
Just, if you go right here, we, we recently did a ride-in, ride-out onto, if you zoom right into that intersection, onto Industrial Park Drive here, and we had the same problem right here, we had semi after semi go over that.
We had two semis, that's all we let, two.
One.
One day after you put in the sprinkling system, he sunk his axles all the way around that first turn.
And we haven't had a problem since.
Then we put the biggest rock we could find right there, and instantly solved the problem, and so.
Thank you, Chris.
Chris, thanks for going to the neighbors. You said you visit a lot of people that live on corners, thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Thank you for the person that actually did it.
He probably did it.
Picking on you tonight, aren't we?
I will accept that praise, thank you for acknowledging my work.
You're both, you're both welcome.
Oh my goodness.
I'm more concerned, five Amazon packages a day.
Not to my own.
Oh, I thought you were on the same schedule as Amber.
No, not at all.
Or the Marces.
Or the Marces, is it five, five a day?
Good heavens.
I, I make a motion, we go into closed session for land transaction and reasonably imminent litigation.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Gordon, seconded by Councilman Oiler, to go into closed session for land transaction and reasonably imminent litigation, and this is a roll call vote. Councilwoman Beck?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Argyle?
Aye.
Councilman Oiler?
Aye.
Councilman Marshall?
Aye.
We are adjourned into closed session, thanks for joining us.